Good evening. I now call to order the October 3rd, 2018 meeting of the Hampton School Board. The signor, sir, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. All members are present and accounted for. Now, as we move to our invocation, I'd like to call on our student liaison Xavier Williams.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, member of the board, Dr. Smith. It is great to finally be back and introduce more great students this school year. Today, we have from Aberdeen Elementary School, a 5th grade student, Jerius Fayall, and he will be giving us our invocation and pledge of allegiance today. And so, if you don't mind coming up to the podium, and everyone, please stand.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Evening, everyone.
Evening.
My name is Jerius Fayall, and I am a 5th grade student at Aberdeen Elementary. Now, I will be, now I will read a poem entitled "The Garden Within" by Angela Yardi. "Guard your heart always, for there you will find that delicate feelings and thoughts are entwined. Each must be tended and nurtured and fed, or weeds can develop and grow there instead. Inzement and bitterness grow if unchecked, so don't give them room, sow love and respect. Ungracious giving and hurtful disdain trample on friendships and introduce pain. Plant there instead some patience and care, and let them grow blessings for all to share. Weed out your anger, instead in his place grow our understanding and divine-given grace."
Thank you so much, and so, great poem.
Thank you.
Really good job. So, it's the beginning of the school year. How are things going on at Aberdeen Elementary?
Pretty good.
Good. 5th grade student, you're ready to move on to middle school?
Yes.
What's your, you're excited about that? What's your favorite subject so far this 5th grade year?
I think science.
Science, what do you like about it?
It has a lot of mystery to it. It's very interesting to me.
Interesting, that's awesome. So, what do you want to be when you grow up? Does it have anything to do with science, or? No?
Technology.
Technology? That's awesome. They go to, those two things go hand in hand.
Sorry, didn't know that.
Well, thank you so much for coming. Can you introduce some of the people that you have behind you?
I have my mom with me, my grandma, and my mom's boyfriend.
All right, and can you all stand to be recognized, please, if you don't mind? Thank you so much, and what about your administration?
Oh, I have Ms. Young, my principal, and Ms. White, my assistant principal.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight. It means a lot. And to you, Jerius, I really wish you the best of luck in your last year of elementary school, and I know you'll continue to do great things at Aberdeen Elementary and even as you progress to middle school. So, continue to make your parents proud, and your administration, I know you do great things, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much for visiting us today.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, Jerius, and thank you to the family for sharing him with us this evening. As we move on to the next item for business, it is the adoption of the Agenda 1.03. Do I hear a motion?
Move adoption.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve the adoption of the agenda. Is there any discussion? Signor, sir, please call for the vote.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
And Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. For our next point of business is item 2. Recognitions, and that's going to be Ms. Gole, our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing.
Good evening, everyone. If Dr. Woodhouse would join me? All right. We would first like to start with the Synergistic Energy Excellence Award for Outstanding Performance in Energy Conservation. The Energy Excellence Award is given to clients who have reached a significant savings milestone and celebrates a solid, sustainable conservation program with the support of the cooperation of administration, faculty, and staff.
Tonight, we have the Regional Vice President from Synergic, Pat Bannon, joining us as well as Philip Maleno and Vincent Baer, our Hampton City School Energy Specialists. Would you all please come and, come forward and join us on the stage?
And I'm going to go ahead and turn the mic over to Mr. Bannon, as he is going to tell us a little bit about the award.
All right, thank you very much. Everyone, five years ago, Hampton City Schools engaged in an energy conservation program with Synergistic. We're a national conservation company, and I'm here to report on how that went over the last five years. Really well. First of all, as an organization, this school district has saved, reduced their energy use by over 22%. That's remarkable. Over every single school in the district has become Energy Star certified. That means they're in the top 25% nationally. That's fantastic. But perhaps most important is over that period of time, you all have reduced your energy spend by $4 million in five years. That's tremendous. So, congratulations to the school district. I'd also like to acknowledge the gentleman to my right, Mr. Phil Maleno, as well as Vincent Michael Baer. They're the energy specialists, sort of those quarterbacks of the program, and they've done a tremendous job of helping every energy user in the district to do just a little better, better job with their energy use, just being mindful of how they use their energy, and it's panned out to be tremendous for the district. So, I also want to acknowledge the school board for having the foresight to partner with Synergistic. I'd also like to thank Dr. Smith for his leadership in the program as well. And I would like to just encourage the district to continue on with energy sustainability. It makes a difference. And with that, this is the Energy Excellence Award. Congratulations.
We thank Synergistic for their partnership with Hampton City Schools and the hard work of Dr. Bowling, Mr. Maleno, and Mr. Baer. They have done a stellar job, not only at energy conservation, but also reaching a level of significant savings for the division. So, I want to say, great job. At this time, I would like to ask if there's any staff members, family members, or any special guests here in the audience tonight to support these individuals. If so, please stand to be recognized.
Well, thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. So, we will now recognize the Virginia School Board Association's Academy Award, so I'm going to ask Dr. Smith to please join me at the front with the recognitions.
Okay, we'll begin. So, the first award I would like to recognize is the Award of Excellence. The Award of Excellence is given to board members who earn 48 credits in two years, and they receive a silver VSPA pin. I would ask at this time if Ms. Phyllis Henry would come forward. She has earned this recognition. Congratulations to you, Ms. Henry. Would you please come forward? The highest honor is an award of distinction for earning 84 credits in two years. Board members earn a Starfish pin for this particular award. This award goes to three board members this year. Our school board chair, Mrs. Anne Cherry, please come forward. Vice Chair Joe Kilgore and Mr. Jason Samuels, please come forward to receive your recognition. Okay, and the next award of honor is given to board members who earn six to six credits in two years. They also receive a gold pin of recognition from VSPA. I would ask at this time, would Mrs. Martha Mugler and Dr. Reginald Woodhouse please come forward as they have earned this honor this evening? Please come forward.
We're going to make Dr. Smith stay put for just a quick moment, because I'm going to actually ask Ms. Cherry to please come forward with the last recognition.
Right. Not only are school board members eligible for this recognition, but superintendents are as well. Our superintendent has also earned the highest honor, an award of distinction, for earning 84 credits in two years. It is my pleasure to present Dr. Smith with this award. On behalf of the board, we're proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that actually concludes the recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gole, and congratulations to all our board members who received these very important awards. Now, we move to item 3, the Consent Agenda, which consists of item 3.01, Personal Reports, 18 to 19, 3.02, Minutes of the School Board Retreat of August 29, 2018, 3.03, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of September 5, 2018, 3.04, Minutes of the School Board Meeting of September 19, 2018, 3.05, Certification of the Closed Session of September 5, 2018, and 3.06, Certification of the Closed Session of September 19, 2018. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval of tonight's consent agenda?
Second.
The second was from, okay, Dr. Mason. It has been moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Dr. Mason that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Ms. Signor, sir, please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
And Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries, consent agenda is approved. Now, we move to item 4, Superintendent and Staff Reports. I'll turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. At this particular time, I would ask that Dr. Bowling, if he would come forward, and he will share with us how we have moved forward, or continue to move forward, in addressing the learning spaces here in Hampton City Schools in particular, our classrooms, and so he will talk about that transformation with members of his team as well. So, Dr. Bowling? And as you know, Dr. Bowling is now serving as the Chief Operating Officer for Hampton City Schools. So, welcome. This is probably your first official, right?
Yeah, it certainly is. But thank you tonight. Madam Cherry, Vice Chair Mr. Kilgore, members of the board, Dr. Smith, and honored guests. My name is Dr. Bowling, and I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Hampton City Schools, and I'm here with members of my team tonight to report on the many wonderful improvements that we've made to our classrooms and school facilities for the 2018-2019 school year. Now, as a department, we were hard at work this summer. We did over 3,000 repairs to our schools while simultaneously working on over 150 school improvement projects. If you take a look at these school improvement projects, you'll find out that they fall in a number of different categories such as removal of portable classrooms, window replacement, bathroom upgrades, painting and flooring and such. But what we want to focus on tonight are those improvements that we made to the academies of Hampton, and also, we would like to follow it up with our report on our largest capital improvement projects, which centered around HVAC upgrades, in other words, ACs there. So, at this time, please join me as we take a virtual tour, if you will, of all of our school sites, and we can highlight what we've done to transform these learning environments. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. John Coburnley, our Lead Maintenance Supervisor for Hampton City Schools, who's going to take us through our first two academies. After he, we will have Mrs. Tina Zanders, and followed by Mr. Phil Maleno, who will do all the HVAC reports. This time, Mr. Coburnley?
Thank you, Dr. Bowling. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to start with academies of Hampton Bethel High School, Academy of Law and Public Safety, home of the Bethel Bruins. Transformation of this learning environment included cutting a new doorway into the hall, framing and installing of the new doorway, separating two classrooms with a new section of a wall, cutting two holes into an exterior masonry wall, installing two additional HVAC units with electrical upgrades, repairing damaged floor tile, and painting the entire learning space. In the process of cutting the doorway, as you see in this picture here, you can see the inner part of the classroom and the hallway on the exterior part, we had to remove the center block in order to do this door jamb. In this picture here, you see the new door jamb in place and the center block back where it's supposed to be. And the two pictures here, one is from the inside of the classroom, one is from the outside with the new door, light shield and hardware. Because 706A and 706B were originally joined by a wall in the middle of the classroom with a set of double doors, we had to remove those doors, so now we have two separate locations. So, in that process, these pictures are showing where we had to put the sheet rock up and insulate and then paint the space. Because the driving simulator requires a constant 68 degrees, we had to install two supplemental HVAC units in this classroom and run new electrical power for it. So, in the final transformation of this space, as you can see, the floors are shining, the walls are all painted, the furniture's in the space, it makes a good learning environment for the students. The picture to the left is a picture of the 911 simulator. The picture to the right is a computer for the driving simulator. And in our final picture here at Bethel is the driving simulator itself. All right, I'm going to go on to Hampton High School, the Maritime Academy, home of the Kravers. Transformation of this learning space involved replacing and widening of the exterior doorway, building walls and dividing the space into designated areas, adding windows to those walls, the removal of the floor tile in the welding area, installation of a new ventilation system, and painting the entire maritime classroom. In the two pictures here, the picture on the left is the old existing door, or the door that was there, not very secure. The new door on the right shows a more solid core, secure door with new hardware. In this picture here, you show it was one large classroom, and we actually divided it up into three separate spaces. Our picture to the left shows the new entryway to the welding area. Our picture to the right shows the entryway to the shop space.
Mr. Coburnley, was that the old metal shop?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I used to work on that a lot.
In this picture here, our guys actually had to remove the floral tile in the welding area, because you can't have vinyl with, you know, sparks, so we had to take that up. And we have the new ventilation system here. Each welding booth required ventilation, so we had to stall in ventilation inside of each booth. As the final transformation takes place of this space, as you see here in the front now, is the classroom space. To your left is the shop classroom, and to the right is the welding room. Here are the welding booths in place, there's one, two, three. Here's the various other pieces of equipment in that welding room. And finally, our shop space. And at this time, I'm going to turn the part of the presentation over to Ms. Tina Zanders.
Thank you, John. Good evening. I'm going to take us through the transformation for Kickitane and Phoebus High School. Kickitane, Academy of Architecture, Environment, and Engineering, home of the Warriors. Transformation of this learning space involved the disconnection and moving of the shop equipment, professional assembly of the paint booth, securing the booth to the concrete pad, connecting a new electrical service, installing a downdraft and exhaust system. The filtration located in the back of the paint booth, filtration keeps solid particles from paint and other materials in the paint booth from entering into the exhaust system. The exhaust system located here on the top of the paint booth extracts fumes from into the classroom, keeping it safe and healthy environment. And finally, our paint booth here. We're showing the final transformation of the paint booth. In the back, we have the filtration system, the workstation, the concrete pad on which the paint booth is bolted to, and the electrical service. This paint booth is located in the rear of the classroom. In the front of the classroom, we have a well-lit, organized, and clean learning space. On to Phoebus High School, Academy of Hospitality and Tourism, home of the Phantoms. The transformation of this learning space involved removing classroom walls to make way for the addition of a new hallway, adding new additional doors, installing two supplemental HVAC units, replacing ceiling tiles, upgrading lighting, adding a new pantry, relocating equipment, tiling numerous areas, painting the entire space, and deep cleaning. To create this new hallway, we had to demo several storage areas and walls out of the old Phantom Inn. Here, you can see the footprints of the previous storage areas. At the demo, we created several new walls and doorways so that each area can have its own entrance. In the back here, you see the entrance to the kitchen, to the back classroom here, and to the dining area. Because we demoed several storage areas, the picture to the left is showing where we had to erect a few walls inside of the kitchens or pantry area and storage. Ceiling tiles throughout the Phantom Inn were demoed. We took out all the old lighting, all the old ceiling tiles, and ceiling grids. On the right, you'll see the new ceiling tiles, ceiling grids, and LED lighting. This picture was actually taken in the kitchen of the new Phantom Inn, because we had to upgrade those vinyl tile, upgrade those tiles to vinyl tiles to stay in compliance with codes and regulations. You can also see one of the new supplemental HVAC units that was placed in the kitchen area. We put one of the HVAC units into the kitchen area to keep a comfortable climate control for cooking and classroom setting, and also one into, on the right, into the dining room to keep a comfortable dining experience. Here, we're showing the process of adding new floor tiles. We had to clean, scrub, prime, and seal the floor prior to adding vinyl tile. Painting throughout the Phantom Inn, we painted all walls, including the kitchen, the dining area, the newly created hallway, both classrooms, leaving a unified, clean Phantom Inn. Here, we're showing the final transformation of the dining room, brightly lit, freshly painted, with new floors.
The, as you look at the entrance to the Blue Phantom Inn, on the right were classrooms that had the old metal partitions, or those have now all been made permanent partitions, and that's how the hallway facilitates this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, instead of the old...
I'm not quite familiar with the old Phantom Inn, I'm sorry.
The, I see some of the, in the dining area, there's still some of the existing old metal partitions, but then you've created the new wall to the kitchen and new walls for the classrooms on the right?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
And here, we're showing the final transformation after installing the vinyl tile and wallboard throughout the Academy of Hospitality and Tourism. Now, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Phil Maleno.
Good evening. The last part of our presentation deals with the HVAC projects. In this case, the HVAC upgrades covered approximately 200,000 square feet of conditioned space, and include Phase 2 at Bethel High School, Phase 2 at Kickitane High School, and an upgrade to the central plant at Tarant Middle School. Completing these projects included removing the old units, repairing the intake and exhaust vents, installing new units, repiping the chiller loop with bypass valves and coil strainers, adding a new direct digital control system, and replacing an air-cooled chiller. Scope of the project at Kickitane is shown here by the shaded areas, covered the science section, the health and CTE section, the library, and adjoining learning spaces. Bethel's footprint was very similar. We also upgraded the auxiliary gym and the band and chorus areas as well. Repair of the intake and exhaust system, we replaced outside air vents and intake louvers, we installed brand-new insulated ductwork, and installed new filtration systems in the new equipment. Between the two buildings, we installed 88 new units. The classrooms received brand-new unit ventilators for our computer labs... The classrooms received brand-new unit ventilators for our computer labs and offices, we put new ceiling cassettes and split systems, and for spaces that were newly turned into offices, we added new fan coil units. All of the fan coil units and the unit ventilators were also installed with new bypass valves and coil strainers. This allows us to remove any solid particles out of the water loop and helps a more efficient transfer of energy from the water loop to the cooling coils. With the addition of the new equipment, we also upgraded our control system. Our old control system was pneumatic and relied on electric-to-pneumatic switches, which sent a signal to those relay stations, which would then send air pressure to all the units in the building through miles of plastic and copper tubing. The new system is all electronic. Each one of the units gets a brand-new controller. All of those controllers are linked to a building-level field panel, and then those field panels are all connected back to a server downtown, and that allows us to more efficiently monitor and operate the system, and also helps with troubleshooting and maintain a more precise learning environment. We installed a brand-new air-cooled chiller at Tarant, which also included upgrades for the electrical, new piping and new insulation. The upgraded chiller was a little bit smaller than the one that was there before, and that allows us to operate the building a little bit more efficiently and hopefully save some more money in the long run. Thank you.
This concludes our presentation tonight, and at this time, we'll be glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Bowlen and your staff. That was a very in-depth, very in-depth report, we appreciate it. Are there any questions from board members? I could tell, Mr. Samuel, you had a question and you were waiting for them to finish the report, so I'm coming to you first. Okay, Mr. Samuel.
Okay. This was such an impressive presentation, and as Ms. Cherry stated, thank you, Dr. Bowlen, but I have a question. For a regular citizen who is a homeowner, and we're talking about HVAC and ducts and electrical wires and so forth, how many homes, residential homes, if you were doing this at a residential property, that are private homeowners, how many ductwork would you, would you have to do? How many electrical wires and how many homes would you have to service? If you just bring it down to that level-
If you think about your average, say, 1100 or 1300 square-foot home, you generally have about a three-ton HVAC system, heat pump or a gas pack. Each one of the classrooms in the buildings has a three-ton unit ventilator, so when you're looking at the overall scope of the project, you know, you're looking at maybe 100 tons at each building. The chillers are about 250 tons each, so we did about half of each building. So you're looking at, you know, anywhere for about 100 homes in general.
100 homes, and how many, how long, in length, the duct, wires and so forth?
Most of the, the unit ventilators are piped, so there's hot and cold water that run to them, so the ductwork is just where we put some air handlers for library spaces. Even some of the split systems we put in doesn't use ductwork anymore, what we do is use insulated refrigeration pipes, and it helps conserve the amount of energy loss between the air, leaving the air handler and getting into the space. So like the split systems, it goes right from the condenser into the evaporator so that we don't lose any BTUs in the transfer. So there isn't a whole lot of ductwork like you would have at your house. But, so for the average spaces, you know, you're looking at 15 to 20 feet, depending on how far above the roof the condenser's located.
So, so in essence, you service 100 homes in one summer?
Yeah, that would be accurate. And that's just the upgrades, that doesn't include the repair, replacement and upkeep of the remaining, you know, two and a half million square feet.
And how many people doing the job?
On each, it depends. Work Mechanical Group was our subcontractor for the mechanical part of it, and they actually had two crews working, and they sort of staggered the job so that you would have groups of guys doing the demolition at Bethel and then over to Kickitane, and then some of the install and the piping, and they kind of moved between building to building so that we could try and keep on schedule.
John, that is just mind-boggling that you, you know, if you took it down to that level, you'd be working on 100 homes in approximately two months.
It, they're very big jobs. I mean, every day counts, you know, we get down to the end and everybody's working overtime and on Labor Day, and that's kind of par for the course, you know, you have eight weeks to try and transform a system from original equipment from 1967 into, you know, something that's much more efficient and upgraded.
And thank you so much for the hard work that you do to make sure that our, not only we, our children are in a very, you know, good learning environment where, you know, the temperature and so forth is controlled, because I've, several years ago, I've been in classes and it's too hot or too cold, you know, so you're able to regulate the temperature very precisely, so, you know, great job, man, so thank you for explaining it to us on that level.
I appreciate that, yeah, we're working hard to make sure that every environment is what it takes to be, to allow the children to be successful.
Great. Any more questions by board members? Or Ms. Henry?
I just, it's very impressive because you're dealing with how many zillion buildings it seems like, that multiplies as you get into the jobs. It's an awful lot of work and we really appreciate it. With Kickitane, I noticed, I was thinking, the gym was just done, so the gym proper was not part of this project of renovation, right?
Correct. We did-
Because we did not have air-conditioned gyms for many years.
Yeah, yeah, the gym system was in place before this project. We did add to the health classrooms on the other side, we replaced those unit ventilators, and in the locker rooms, we put new heating systems and new controls on those heating systems.
Well, it, it looks wonderful and clean and neat, and the air quality is going to be great, because I taught in a classroom at Bethel High School that, in 1980, and the air handler did not look like that, and it had a resident mouse, and so he would come out if I was very quiet and go back in again. So it, it's wonderful to have all this work done, it's impressive when you walk into a building and the auditorium's been redone, and the bathrooms have been redone, and the lighting, but this is a huge expense that you all do in a very efficient way to save us a lot of money, to add toward those energy savings, so nobody thinks that, that new air conditioning is a very exciting project, but it really is, particularly in terms of the comfort, as Mr. Samuel said, of the students, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kilgore.
Just real quick, Dr. Bowlen and your entire team, thank you for the presentation. We always look forward to this. The before and after pictures speak volumes, and, you know, I think some people don't understand how much logistical coordination goes into these projects. They don't just happen in the summer, you're planning for months, if not years. Like you pointed out with the HVAC, there are phases, because you can't do it all in one summer, and I think it shows the city, which we always talk about, we like to share this presentation with City Council, because they're the funding body, and this shows how we take the few dollars that we get, because we would always like more, but we take the few dollars that we get and do as much as we possibly can to create great schools and learning environments, so thank you very much.
Any other questions from board members? Yes, Mr. Williams?
Thanks, thank you, Ms. Cherry. I just wanted to say thank you as well, because I think as a student, we really don't see the labor or the hard work that takes place during the summertime, because we're doing whatever with family and friends during the summertime, but to actually see the before and after, and me being the nosy person that I am, I saw the presentation, actually went in that classroom today, and, at Hampton, and I would actually encourage school board members to, to go to the schools and actually see it in person. The pictures are wonderful, but to see it in person is something much better and actually just gives you the worldview of how it looks now, and so it looks so much better in the classroom, and it actually looks new, the paint makes everything look so brighter, and so it actually looks very nice, and I, I've never been to the Phantom Inn, that's what it's called, I've never been, but it looks-
The Blue Phantom Inn.
The Blue Phantom Inn, I've never been, but it looks really nice, and so I hope Ms. Henry can-
I'll invite you to lunch.
And we can go, and so it really makes everything conducive to learning, you even said that, you know, every day counts, and I think that's what makes our motto here at Hampton City Schools very special, every child, every day, whatever it takes, because this presentation is really a testament or a testimony to what our motto is and our making sure that we do it for every child every day, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Any more comments? Yes, Ms. Mugler?
Just a couple of comments. Thank you very much for the report tonight. It, it was almost like we were watching a video with your enthusiastic presentations, so it was really enjoyable. As Mr. Kilgore said, we always do look forward to this report every year, because as board members, we work really hard to garner whatever dollars we can towards these projects, and so it's nice to see what the outcome is. And, and it's nice for us also to see the environments that we're creating in these academies and how great those are. And I also just noted in several of the spaces that you all had these supplemental air units, which I'm always happy to see those coming into spaces, because we do have some kind of unique classroom spaces that require a little extra oomph. I know some of these were required for the kind of work that's being done in these classrooms, but I know that, you know, there are bandrooms and choral rooms that we might want to look at to use some of those type units, just another little project for y'all to investigate, but just a thought, but, so it's, it's nice to see them being used more and more, because they're, in the past, have, there really haven't been those kinds of products available to us to use that could put out enough air to, to make a difference in those big classroom spaces, so happy to see that, and, and just what a doggone incredible change, looking at the old system and then the new system, that's just crazy town. You look at, that looks like something, I don't know if any of y'all watched The Crown, that series, The Crown, but it just reminds me of a switchboard operator thing with all the wires and the crazy stuff, but the transformation of that alone is just, you know, just incredible. So thank you all so much for your very hard and diligent work that you do during the summer, I hope maybe you'll take a, maybe a winter vacation so that you can enjoy some time off, snow skiing is a lot of fun, but thank you again for, for all the hard work and, and, and working to make our buildings the best that they can be.
Anybody else? Yes, Ms., Dr. Woodhouse.
Yes, I would like to chime in and just say that this was a wonderful report, and I have had the opportunity to go and see the Bethel Academy of Law and Public Safety, along with our chairperson, Ms. Ann Cherry, and we were, had an opportunity to drive the assimilation, what's it called?
Assimilator.
Yeah, the assimilator, and I did better than she did, and-
Oh, ma'am.
Only because he didn't kill anybody.
And also had the pleasure of going over to Kickitane and seeing the academy there for architect, environment and engineering, and I must say that the, the atmosphere is very inviting for learning, and so we would thank you for such a great job, and keep up the good works.
Thank you.
Any other comments by board members? Thank you again, and I'd like to say, just as Dr. Woodhouse said, several board members did get an opportunity to see some of these transformations on the first day of school, and everybody was and is, I'm very pleased with the, the hard work that you've put forth for our academies and for our children, and for our faculty and staff as well. And as, as Mr. Kilgore said, this is such an important report to look forward to, and he's sincere, because it was two days ago, he sent me a note and he said, "I can't wait to see Dr. Bowlen send his group's report," so he's sincere about that, so thank you again, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowlen. And, and it was great to see his team tonight. Great job. Thank you, Madam Chair, and at this time, we would ask that Ms. Dorch, she will come forward to provide the financial report, our chief financial officer.
Good evening, Madam Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, school board members, Dr. Smith and all in attendance. It is my pleasure tonight to present to you the July 2018 and the August 2018 financial report. For the end of July 2018, revenues totaled $7.4 million. This is slightly lower than July of the previous year, and that is due primarily to when we receive our local contribution from our governing body. It varies from year to year. At the end of August of 2018, our revenues increased to $15.7 million. It is slightly lower than August of the previous year as well, due to the timing of the local contribution, but also the Virginia Department of Education communicated to all school divisions that we should expect less August sales tax payments. They plan to true-up that amount and to provide all sales tax payments for that month to all school divisions before the end of this calendar year. For our expenditures and encumbrances for July and August, they were $23 million and $32 million respectively. And as a reminder, that our fiscal year '19 budget was based on an average daily membership of 18,600 students. Once the fall membership certification is complete, we will compare our 930 figures to our budget to see if we need to make any adjustments. And lastly, included in the report, in both reports, you will find a detailed listing of all categorical transfers to and from category nine. That completes my presentation, and I will now entertain any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions by board members for Ms. Dorch? Thank you.
Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes superintendent's reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Now we move to next item five, the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. I have received three. Ms. Sadner, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers shall not address matters involving an individual student, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards or other similar documents are not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you. Actually, there are four speakers, and there are five speakers, and the first speaker will be Ms. Brenda Marks.
Good evening, Dr. Mark, Dr. Smith and board members. My name is Brenda Marks, I live at 54 Marina Road, and I have a nine-year-old daughter that's in the fourth grade at Hunter B. Andrews School. My main concern for tonight is to discuss the issues with the special education problems in the school. Last year, when I took my complaint to the Department of Education Office of Civil Rights, and we mediated an agreement, I found it very compelling that the attorney who was the mediator complimented Ms. Rebus, explaining to me that she was a good and serious arbitrator, because she had done a whole lot of these with them. And where that's a high compliment to Ms. Rebus, one has to wonder, how is it that Hampton City Schools is so well-known with the United States Department of Education Office of Civil Rights, and how is it that Ms. Rebus has had to negotiate so many? I'm also, because my daughter's autistic, a member of a number of autism and Ashperger support groups, one in particular locally, and since posting and discussing different issues I've encountered, I have been amazed at the number of people that have children enrolled in Hampton City Schools who are asking for recommendations for attorneys to hire to deal with the Special Education Department of this school. Dr. Smith, I'm going to go at it again, I'm not going to give up. I'm not going to give up. The fact that the school will not let ABA therapists work with our autistic children within the school building is a hindrance. To me, it is a catastrophic hindrance in that I got a call again from the school today that on Friday, my daughter told the instructional aide that she wanted to kill herself. That school is that overwhelming. There has to be a way, on an individual basis, that a waiver can be signed by the ABA therapist and the parent, and these outside therapists be allowed in the school. The lack of social skills causes these children a total inability, not only to interact with their peers, but to understand and comprehend why they don't fit. And I just think that I, you can ask Ms. Reeves afterwards, I will throw it, the attorney's name, Lois Main, as the person that most people have responded, they have used from Williamsburg in dealing with the school. But you have parents that are seriously considering pulling their special need children and homeschool. You have parents like me who have just, I spend so much time at Andrews trying to work with the staff there with my daughter that I feel like I ought to have a cot in the nurses' station, just to say. And now tonight, I learned that April Frye has left. Yet another major strong plus that this special ed department had. I have met with Ms. Judge. I have high hopes for her. If she doesn't get burnt out by the muck that she's got to get out of that she walked into. So that was my main concern, knowing that the second concern is going to fall on deaf ears and nothing personal meant, Dr. Smith. Again, I believe it's fiscally irresponsible to extend your contract for yet another year with more money, with the budget shortfalls, and especially since $461,000 was removed from the special ed budget for this year. I feel like the academies have gotten so important that the most needy of your children are the ones that are losing out. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janine Scherer. Janine Scherer, S-C-H-E-R-R-E-R. Oh, didn't see you. Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Janine Scherer, and I reside at Sixth Lake Erie Court. My son is an eighth grader at Sims Middle School. I want to talk to you tonight about the lack of communication with the educators at Sims and the administration. My son is a special ed student also, and I believe that these students are not thriving. And it seems someone is trying to hide something. All I ask is for positive interactions and opportunities for all special needs students and regular ed students. There have been numerous events, that I know of, that my son has missed because of lack of communication in the school. For example, just a few flu shots that were offered for all other students were not offered to my son. Twenty-first century paperwork went home late, and I was told there was special criteria in order for my son to be accepted into the program, as well as various other school events. Looking at the, I have talked to, sent letters to different people on the School Board. I have tried to contact the special ed coordinator. I have tried to contact Ms. Judge. I have talked to the principal. Everybody wants to pull it off onto somebody else. All I asked from my, the principal was to have communication by email so that I could have documentation of things that were being said instead of it being a he said, she said situation. I have complaints about the teacher as far as communication. From day one, I was trying several times to meet with the teacher. Her certification is provisional in a special education setting, and I have more information with that. Back-to-school night, when I took my time to go to back-to-school night, I am also an educator. I happen to work for Newport New City Schools, and I missed out on going to a workshop and earning points for my own profession, to work with my own kids, to go to my son's back-to-school night. I felt it was that important. When I arrived at the school, the teacher was not there. I was given no explanation. I was told by the assistant principal that they would look into it and get back to me. That was over a week ago, and I have heard nothing since. The conditions, I have, my child has come home with wet pants. My child has come home with dirty face. He's come home with cuts, bruises, et cetera, without any explanation. The only, actually, the only response was he was fine when he left school. My school and where, the school he goes to and where we live is the first bus stop. So, you know, go figure. I have taken pictures, and I have that, and I have showed those, so that tells a different story. I have not been allowed to attend his class, visit his class. I have difficulty with that. I have difficulty with correspondence with the administration. On July 26, I was just quoting some stuff from the VDOE site about professionalism, and it says, "Students must be taught by teachers who are properly licensed and endorsed for the classes they teach. All teachers must be properly licensed, again, and endorsed according to state requirements. School division should be required to send notification to parents in Title I schools if taught four-plus weeks by a teacher not properly licensed and endorsed." And last year, I know her endorsement didn't come in. She's on a provisional license at the time. I questioned that with the special ed department and everybody, and I was blown off. I was not given an answer about it. I was told that she was highly qualified or she wouldn't be hired. A Title I is supposed to provide annual notification to parents of any schools that, or anyone who inquires about the qualifications of the child's teacher, and I have not received that. I also have that states, state and school divisions must ensure that low-income or minority students are not assigned to classes taught by ineffective, inexperienced, or out-of-field teachers. And there's a minimum of a baccalaureate degree from a regional, regionally accredited college or university. As far as the ABA therapist, I agree with that also. My ABA therapist was asked to go in just for observation. I have given her permission on my side, but I have not been told what she can do. She sent emails to the administration at the school, and that was the second day of school, and she has not received any correspondence from any of them. And I have, you know, given my okay for those people to talk on my behalf. So I've tried contacting the different venues, and I haven't heard anything in response. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lance Jones.
Good evening, Chairwoman Cherry, members of School Board, Dr. Smith and staff. My name is Lance Jones, and I am the civic engagement chair for the Hampton branch NAACP. Last week, on National Voter Registration Day, Governor Northam kicked off the Governor's High School Voter Registration Challenge. The challenge ends on May 20. Virginia high schools that achieve at least 65% registration of their eligible senior class will earn the award. The award is intended to recognize and commemorate the efforts of the next generation of leaders to educate, engage, and inform their fellow students about how to get involved in the voting process. I would like to thank Dr. Smith for considering to have HCS high schools be part of this important civic engagement challenge. We agree with the Governor's quote. "We want as many qualified and eligible voters to cast their ballot here in the Commonwealth." Voting is what makes our democracy strong, said Governor Northam. It's crucial that we engage, encourage young Virginians to make, inhabit of making their voices heard on Election Day. My administration is proud to sponsor this initiative and continue this effort to recognize schools and promote civic engagement and voter participation, end quote. The Hampton branch NAACP has partnered with area churches and organizations to register 1,000 voters by the deadline October 15. I would like to remind everyone that if a 17-year-old will be 18 by November 6, they are eligible to vote, register and vote on November 6. Remember, the deadline to register for the November 6 election is October 15. Have a good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Our next speaker is James Gomery.
Hi, my name is James Gomery. I currently live in the Riverdale area of Hampton. I've been working with Inspire U.S., a nationally-based organization. Their goal is to establish high school voter registration programs in every high school in America. They are a nonpartisan, non-ideological, 501(c)(3) organization. Inspire will not work with any 527 organizations. Last year, Inspire helped to establish a high school voter registration challenge program in all 29 high schools in Fairfax County, Virginia. As of about a month ago, they have managed to register over 5,200 new school voters, high school, new high school voters. When Inspire is invited into a particular high school, the first thing they do is work with the existing social studies departments. They bring in experts to teach the students how to register new high school voters. They also set up a URL for that school so the students can register to vote in a matter of minutes. In Virginia, they also work to make sure that that high school can win the Governor's Award for High School Voter Registration that Lance just mentioned. Okay? Pecosa High School and Maury High School have both won that award. Inspire does this all for free. There is no cost to this whatsoever. Our social studies teachers devote their lives to teaching their students about history, government, civics, and democracy. The best way that we can show our appreciation to these teachers for their hard work is to make sure that all of their students leave high school as registered voters. The United States unfortunately has one of the lowest voter participation rate of any democracy in the world. One way that we can help to remedy that situation is to establish high school voter registration programs in every high school in America. I would like to thank the board for allowing me to speak this, speak this evening. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And our final speaker tonight is Stacy Shorter.
Good evening, Ms. Cherry, Mr. Kilgore, and members of the board. I will be brief. Hi, my name is Stacy Shorter. I am the chair of the Education Committee of the Hampton NAACP and the mom of a first grader. I came here tonight to congratulate you, Dr. Smith, and the members of your administration and the School Board on the outstanding job done by Hampton City Schools in having 93% of its schools accredited. After learning of the official report from the Virginia Department of Education, I was not only filled with pride due to the fact that this 93% represents the highest accreditation rating in six years, but I was also very pleased at the integrity shown by this administration and this School Board. With two of your schools being accredited with conditions, you could have easily spun that data to report that Hampton City Schools had 100% of its schools accredited with two being accredited with conditions. However, because of your commitment to transparency, instead of reporting misleading statements, you reported the facts that 93% of Hampton schools are indeed accredited. This level of transparency has not always been the case in Hampton City Schools, especially during times when less than 40% of our schools met full accreditation. It has been a very good news month for Hampton City Schools. Since the news about the 93%, apparently the class of 2018 has posted the highest division on-time graduation rate and lowest dropout rate since 2008. So on behalf of the Hampton branch of the NAACP and as a mom of someone who goes to Hampton City Schools, I want to say thank you for being transparent, honest, and forthright, and I want to say, keep up the good work.
That concludes all our speakers. Do you have any more you've received, Ms. Knight? Moving on to our next agenda item will be item six, deliberation, which will include item 6.01, review of School Board Policy GBACA Staff Dress Code, 6.02, review of School Board Policy GBEB, reports of certain acts to school authorities, 6.03, review of School Board Policies GCBBC overtime slash compensatory time policy, and GCBBC dash R, overtime compensatory time guidelines, 6.04, review of School Board Policy GCK instructional planning periods, 6.05, review of School Board Policy GCKB instructional staff meetings, 6.06, review of School Board Policy GCQA, non-school employment by HCS employees, 6.07, review of School Board Policy GCQAB, compensation for off-site services, and 6.08, review of School Board Policy GCQC, exchange teaching. If there are any questions by the board members, I would note that Ms. Ruth is here. However, there are no suggested changes to any of these policies, just the five-year review. Any questions by any board members? Hearing none, these will be moved to our action item for our next School Board meeting. Moving to our next item, it is items for action number seven. We have several. 7.01, First Amendment to Superintendent's 2017 Contract. 7.02, reappointment of representatives to the Hampton Employees Retirement System Board, known as HERS. 7.03, revision of School Board Policy KBA, requests and responses to inquiries under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. 7.04, revision of School Board Policy KNAJ, relations with police authorities. 7.05, revision of School Board Policy JO, student records. 7.06, revision of School Board Policy GCBC, employment of family members. 7.07, revision of School Board Policy GC, instructional staff licensure. 7.08, revision of School Board Policy GCDA, effect of criminal conviction or founded complaint of child abuse and neglect. 7.09, revision of School Board Policy GCC, staff reporting and hiring, and 7.10, revision of School Board Policy GCJ, staff time schedules. With that, we can start with 7.01, First Amendment to Superintendent's 2017 Contract. Do I hear motion to approve?
Madam Chair, move approval of action item 7.01.
Second. It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and second by Ms. Mugler to approve action item 7.01, First Amendment to Superintendent's 2017 Contract. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Sadler, so would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion is carried. Before we go to the next item, I'd like to just, on behalf of the board, explain what we're doing with that First Amendment to Superintendent's 2017 Contract, just to give you a brief overview. The contract has three parts to it. The first one is nothing more than a reclassification. It's simply the way that we report his supplement for things like cell phone and internet. The Virginia retirement system has determined that that needs to be reported throughout the state for everyone as part of a base salary. So it is So, it is, there's no increase in salary there. It is simply taking funds that were previously, for instance, in the left pocket and putting them in the right. On the second issue, this is something the entire school board, as you can see by the anonymous vote tonight, is very excited about. It doesn't matter whether you point to the fact that we have 93% of our schools accredited or whether you want to point to the fact that we have witnessed one of the highest on-time graduation rates or one of the lowest dropout rates or Dr. Smith's laser-focused leadership for this school division or the academy, whatever you want to point to, this board is committed to making sure that we do right by the superintendent. And one of the things we want to do is to continue moving forward with that kind of success in this school division. Therefore, that second item speaks to us adding a year to his contract. So, instead of 2021, the contract would end 2022. And the third piece is something that is done, whether you are a board of a bank, a board of a major corporation, or a board of a school division, you want to always be able to appropriately compensate your CEO. With that said, this board has determined that we will be establishing a deferred payment plan, a deferred fund wherein the superintendent will be, we, the board will put X number of dollars into a fund for deferred payment plan wherein, after he retires, he will be able to have access to that fund. That would, that would not go beyond five years. But one of the things we felt strongly about is that when you have someone who is good, you want to keep them. But when you have someone who is excellent, excellent as Dr. Smith is, you want to shut them down. So, that's what I told him. We are putting, we're putting some stipulations in place so we can ensure that as we move forward in this Hampton School Division, that we maintain this level of leadership. And I'm sure, Dr. Smith, this community, and I know this board, as well as the Division Leadership Team, want to congratulate you and thank you for your hard work.
Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you for your support and confidence in, in my leadership. I'm humbled by your actions this evening, and I look forward to the future of our work together on behalf of our young people. As superintendent, on several occasions, I've stated that it remains a pleasure to serve the young people, their families, the dedicated members of our school division, and the Hampton community at large. As you know, I started my tenure superintendent with Hampton City Schools in July, and that was on the 15th of 2015. When I arrived as your superintendent, I assured you and our community during my Look, Listen, and Learn discussions that we would build from places of strength, and we have remained committed to this approach. This evening, I am delighted to report to you that when I arrived, yes, 41% of our schools were fully accredited and that this year, 93% of our schools are accredited without conditions. And in 2015, our on-time graduation rate for the class of 2015 was 88%. And the on-time graduation rate for the class of 2018 is 92.6%. In 2015, our dropout rate was 5.1%. And for 2018, for this school year, our dropout rate is 1.57%, lower than the state and one of the lowest in our region. And in 2015, we were offering four-pocket academies, and we added the Law and Public Safety Academy, and we had 18 career pathways. This year, I am so pleased that we have moved to wall-to-wall academies across all four high schools, from pocket academies to 16 academies, and from 18 career pathways to 44 career pathways. And in 2015, we launched dual enrollment course offering opportunities for our young people at each high school. And to date, we have experienced a 600% increase in dual enrollment coursework completed over the past two years from 518 credit hours to now 3,714 credit hours earned by our young people. Indeed, we have strengthened our partnership with Thomas Nelson Community College, as well as other business leaders. I recognize that this important work and our student achievement outcomes are representative of your commitment as a school board, and it speaks to the commitment of the members of the Division Leadership Team, building administrators, teachers, support staff, students, families, city council, and our community. For this support, I am not only grateful, but I also remain fully committed to our future together as we work in collaboration with our community to ensure academic excellence for every child, every day, whatever it takes. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board, for the opportunity to speak.
And thank you, Dr. Smith, and consider yourself duly locked down. Now, next item, 7.02, Reappointment of Representatives to the Hampton Employees Retirement System Board, known as HERS.
Madam Chair, recommend the approval of the names submitted.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Henry and second by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve the names submitted for reappointment of representatives to the HERS board. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Mugler?
Madam Chair, I just, for purposes of public knowledge, the, the names of the individuals that have been submitted for approval are Carolyn Bowers and Martha Milo Avery, and those are reappointments.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Aden, so please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
And Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries, and congratulations to the new representatives. Items 7.03 through 7.10 are all policies. Do we want to take those as a block or do we want to take those individually?
Madam Chairman, I would present a motion to approve Policies 7.03 through 7.10 as a block.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Mugler that we take Items 7.03 through 7.10 as a block for approval. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Aden, so would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
And Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now moving to Item 8, Deliberation First Read. Let me just remind board members that this is deliberation first read, so the questions we would hope would only be clarifying questions on the policies themselves. Ms. Reeves, I know you have the majority of them, but there again, I see that there are no revisions, just five-year reviews. Are there any clarif, yes, ma'am?
That's correct. They are, they are your board policies, all in Section B, and they are required to be reviewed, obviously, by code every five years. I have done so. They have been through the Policy Review Committee. They saw no need to make any revisions either, and so we're recommending that these be simply marked "Last Reviewed."
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions for board members? Okay, these will be moved to deliberation agenda for our next meeting. Our next item for business is Number 9, Information. The next meeting of the Hampton School Board will take place on Wednesday, October 17th, at 6:30 PM at the Rupert Sargent Building located at 1 Franklin Street. Is there any information from the superintendent?
Madam Chair, just one observation, and I know that later we will have it as a part of a recognition for the school board, but we have Dr. Bowling here, and I want to acknowledge the fact that Jones Magnet School certainly received the Blue Ribbon National Award, and we will recognize them. So, Dr. Bowling will ask you to stand again because he was principal of that. We, thank you so very much.
Yes, that was.
More to come in that regard.
I'm sure. Any other information items for school board members? Ms. Mugler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was lucky enough to be at the WHRO board meeting this afternoon, and present there was our state superintendent who shared with us the governor's initiatives in education. I think we're all pretty familiar with them, but those are pre-K initiatives, which are near and dear to our hearts in Hampton, so I'm happy to hear that that's on, very much on the governor's radar and also the first lady's, one of her key initiatives as well. Equity and excellence is also on our governor's agenda for education. Addressing the teacher shortage, again, a lot of talk around that, a lot of talk at the state level with respect to salaries and the, the clear knowledge that there has to be some movement there in order to retain our, our best teachers. And then post-secondary preparation for young people, those are key initiatives for the governor's office. So, it's always, I, I'm so honored to serve on the WHRO board because it's, it's, as, as a communications major in college, I really love to be a part of this particular board. But they always bring in just the best folks from across Virginia and talk about, you know, the issues that are facing us in education. Of course, there is talk on the state level of doing additional expansion of virtual learning, and of course, WHRO, which is right in our backyard, and Hampton is one of the owning school divisions, one of the owners of WHRO, and they are talking very much about using eMedia VA as part of that statewide expansion. So, lots of great things, and I think we're just really lucky to be positioned on the peninsula and very tightly related to WHRO and the great work that they are doing. They also did talk about, and I have shared with administrators, the Spelling Bee that is coming up and very much encouraging middle schoolers to participate in that. And so, lots of wonderful things going on. They're also doing a lot of, they did this thing called King Tide, which is, has to do with sea level rise, and they're working to get classrooms across the area to participate in measuring the tides and flood levels and things of that nature. So, a lot of really great things going on at WHRO and a lot of free material for our teachers and to use. And so, I know, Dr. Cargiano, in, in our vault, that you incorporate a lot of these materials as well as what's created in our division, but it's a great resource and so I think that's all that, that's all I'll share at the moment. There's a lot, a lot of content today.
Okay, and Ms. Mugler, we want to thank you for serving as a representative on the WHR board because you too lend a level of expertise to that board, and thank you for sharing what's going on once you go to these meetings because that benefits all of us to know what, what we have going on in our own backyard, if you'd say. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Samuels?
Madam Chairwoman, on last week, I had the privilege of attending the CUBE Conference, which was held in Las Vegas. I did not play the One Arm Bandit. My focus was on all the workshops. And CUBE stands for Council of Urban Board of Education, and they provided some great information, which I will share with the board members, with each board member at a later date. So, that was a very, very good conference.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels, because we did have an opportunity to look at the agenda, and several board members were interested in some of the items, so we look forward to you sharing those with us. Any other comments from board members? Yes?
I'm sorry, I'll just make one other comment, and this is about Dr. Bowling and, and the Blue Ribbon School, but just, I, I mentioned it to Dr. Smith earlier, but it, it is the only middle school across Virginia that was recognized in this way. It's national recognition, so we're really proud of the work that you did at Jones and, and continue to do for Hampton City Schools, but it's really a great honor for the division, but nice to see that it's really the only middle school in Virginia recognized in this way. There was one other high school in Virginia recognized, and the others were, were elementary schools, I think, four others. So, really, it is, it is a great distinction and very proud of that.
And, and just to add, as Mrs. Mugler was talking, you know, what an exceptional staff here, and so, so much in terms of your leadership, but also an exceptional staff here at Jones. So, we're proud of the work here at Jones.
Exactly.
With, with our other schools as well, so, thank you.
Yes, did I see you, Dr. Mason?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to say I had an opportunity to visit the Nashville Academies, which was an exciting trip, and being able to see the Academy's model in action was tremendous. And I came back with, with lots of energy, lots of excitement, some new things and some, some ideas and things of that nature. I think we took an excellent team from Hampton City Schools that represented the division very well. And so, being able to see what they're doing and look at how we're moving in fidelity, and that's one of the things that they talk about as you implement the model with fidelity, is going to be a great thing for Hampton City Schools as well as the city of Hampton. Working with the Town and Gown Committee, one of the things we talked about is how do we retain our students in this area, and it fits tremendously with the Academy's model. So, I see it working hand in hand, what we're trying to do as we build the city of Hampton along with Hampton City Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Mason, and to say that you came back enthusiastic and excited is an understatement, because I know you were blowing up my phone the whole time you were there, talking about things. Any other comments from board members? Yes, Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's actually been a while since I've been able to sit behind this desk or even at Rupert Sargent due to the great things that I've been experiencing too this summer, but I do want to extend my thanks for trusting me with another year to serve with Jeremy this year as the student representative alternate, and it's very convenient since Jeremy and I go to the same school. We do meet and talk a couple, a few times throughout the school day, but thank you so much for entrusting me with another year and so upset with myself that I missed some of the first few meetings and even the swearing-in ceremony, but as most of you know, I've, I've had the pleasure this year to serve as governor for the Virginia Boy State, and so we actually have a meeting coming up with them soon, and so, thank you and thank you for accepting my apology and missing those early meetings in the school year. In addition, I actually wanted to say that we actually have some really good football games. You know, those are my favorite parts of these meetings, when we get to talk about the football games and basketball games. So, we're in a very week-long, three-week, three-day, actually, football game schedule starting tomorrow with the homecoming game of Hampton versus Minchville. That should be a great one. And then Friday is Phoebus and Bethel, and then on that Saturday, it's Kick It Tan and Heritage, and even members from WHCS, the news channel, 46, will be catching some of the games, and even some of them have been on YouTube. So, it's a really fun time, actually, and so it's senior year, and so I'm really taking in the moment of the football games now before I become an alumni, so.
But thank you. We know you were thinking of us.
Is the film crew going to be sure to film the band at halftime?
Well, you know, they actually got really up and close to my face at one of the games. I tell the band all the time, you know, you gotta, gotta have a straight face the entire time, don't smile, and then next thing you know, I turn around and, man, there's a camera. I'm like, all right, I can bust a smile or two. Give them a good side, though, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other comments from board members? Okay, we are going to be adjourned in this meeting, but I need to announce that the board is going to reconvene into closed session. There being no other business meeting is adjourned.